Construction, office break room upgrade. And that's, that's a project that was done.
Last year.
I'm just wondering.
I'll have to check into that.
Okay.
I would like to amend my motion to pay all the bills with the exception of Maddox Construction until we can find out more details on that.
And I have a question.
Okay.
Or a comment, I guess, on the P and K John Deere. It's categorized under Public Works. It's a $38,000 lawnmower. And Ms. Kaufman's in the audience and she remembers that the Eldorado Works Board, she thinks, and so it should be designated not to Public Works but to the Eldorado Works Board.
That's right. It should be Eldorado Works and that was discussed today, so that was.
Okay, so if we can make that change.
Yeah.
Okay, um, my motion again to eliminate those two and motion for approval.
And I second again. Any other discussions?
I thought that was right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That she, that was unfinished.
Let me also mention that our accounts payable clerk tries to send these out ahead of time. I do believe that one about the John Deere. I think that there was a question about that one and it must've got a little confused after that.
There, there is no line item though that that's billing to what department or where that's going to, so that would need to be added as well. Uh, I want to say with the, looking at the cost of that, it's probably like a green smolder, possibly for the lawn club maybe, but.
It is.
I'm not sure.
It's just part of that, uh, what they requested from the Eldorado Works Board for the lawnmower.
Okay.
I believe two cars. So yeah, we'll get that taken care of and we'll, we'll have the other one on there. So, anything else? And I don't call you Madam Clerk, do I? Madam Tissue?
Michael Rice.
Uh.
Billy Lance. Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Jeannie Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Uh.
Andre Russ.
Uh.
Paul Cho.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Uh. We do have unfinished business. We have the second reading of an ordinance by title only.
An order to meet in ordinance number fifteen eighty-six. I'll read it for the third time next time.
At the next council meeting, okay. Under new business, first item, purchase authorization from the police department. Captain Dumas.
As long as I can remember, we had an officer named Tom Reese. All right, I'm figuring in his own equipment and his own calls and his own making. Uh, so we thought we'd look into getting lawn equipment for out there and the sports buildings to keep them in. And we had our grant writer looking into it, trying to find the grants. I had a hundred percent of them, actually already got the money for it. Uh, so it's not on top of that, so we're ready to get this done soon as possible.
I make a motion to approve.
Sure. Any discussion?
That's, that's a, excuse me, ma'am, can I speak? That is a perfect example of officer loans in ways that I think that's going to, uh, to find a solution to the problem. And, and I just want to say I appreciate that. And tell your grant writer we appreciate him. Maybe we can get him to look up some grants for us. Thank you, ma'am.
Was there any other discussion?
Michael Rice.
Uh.
Billy Lance. Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Jeannie Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Uh.
Andre Russ.
Aye.
Paul Cho.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Uh. Well, that was fabulous, really. Next on the agenda, I have the ARPA, and I know I sent out an email containing the fact sheet and what was decided to do, um, what the county decided to do, and I know there was a suggestion. I, I do know that we probably had to have some, I didn't know if we had to have some discussion about that, but I know that moving forward, there has to be an ordinance and all of that put in place as to how we were going to do the breakdown for the ARPA. I don't know who all had an opportunity to actually read the fact sheet to kind of see some of the ways that it could be used, if there was any other discussion that wanted, you all wanted to have about it tonight. I know there was a suggestion about it.
Yeah, I, I made that suggestion and since, since that, um, which the suggestion was originally to pay, you know, like a bonus towards the, like we do the Christmas bonus, I've since talked to Chief Hickman, uh, Chief Mosby, and, uh, Robert Evans. And I think there's maybe some ways that we can, um, need to hash that out a little bit more maybe.
Definitely.
Because we've got, uh, a lot of our, um, less tenured employees have got, um, they were some of the ones that were really out there and they want to try to, to give them a larger portion of that bonus, so, um.
That's why I thought it was appropriate to read the fact sheet and to do a little research on it. I know you responded quickly and the way the Christmas bonuses are done are a little bit different, even the way the county did it.
Right.
Was a little bit different from that. So maybe you all want to take a little time and have a, a deeper discussion about that.
Possibly, I, I'd like to call a finance meeting here shortly. Uh, I know Mr. Evans has been out ill for a couple of weeks and there's another thing or two that we, he and I, Mr. Scroggins, need to meet with. After that, uh, I'd like to call a finance meeting and then maybe we could do that with all the department heads kind of all at one table and get that worked out.
I know I've spoken with Emerson Scroggins, I spoke with Micah about it, and he suggested that even with whatever is decided, that we go with the same, uh, I think the Southwest planning that the county went with to help make sure that everything is, is done correctly.
Right.
Because we'll get another, the same amount next year, but it has, we have to make sure that we, that it's spent correctly so that we don't have to run the risk of paying that back. So with that being said, I, I don't know if anybody else has any other, I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Russ?
I just want to.
Oh, okay, okay.
I want, I want you not to force my opinion. I think just whatever we do, I think this is a perfect opportunity to really show our employees how much we appreciate them during this pandemic time, because everybody, and if we had stuff going through our, our employees who were trying to, and they hung in there and they worked and they did everything we asked them, and they dealt with the public and they trash. I just, uh, police and the fire department, I just think if we can do it, we need to do the max or whatever, show them how much we appreciate them. I just truly think this is an opportunity where we can maybe do, do, really show how special they are. Thank you.
I'm all for that.
So, the, this money was 1.6, 1.8 million?
1.8.
So it's 1.8 million and how much did the county get that, Mary? Did you get that number?
I think theirs was, um, thirty, 3.7, I think.
Percent?
Or was it? I think it was 3.7. I'm not 100% sure, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this, this 1.8 million, is that our portion, the city portion?
Yes.
So they've got their portion?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the city's portion.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So this, this American Rescue Plan that, that was, uh, that was introduced in March in this for economic recovery and all types of different things that we can allocate from our research, correct?
Uh huh.
Financial things, we could get that one out, just maybe we can do for it in, in our, is that what you're saying?
Yep. I'd like to, I'd like for the department heads to be involved in that. I think that would be best.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, next on the agenda, Mr. Russ wanted to be on the agenda.
Yes, I'm, I'm not going to hold y'all long, I just, uh, last council meeting, the mayor's budget came before the council and I was talking to Willie about it and I was just looking at that and I was just wondering, her budget was $40,000 short. Uh, it surprised me that it came out of nowhere at the end of this year, which means that the month of September, which is a little bit in August, the month of September, the month, the month in, uh, September, I told you it'll be December, she has to come $10,000 short of her budget each particular month. So she has to cut her budget by $10,000 from the rest of this year. And, and I'm, I've seen the, the council, uh, amend budgets, I've seen her do things to, to balance budgets, and I'm trying to see why we didn't take that same approach with the mayor and why we set her up to be $10,000 short each month for the rest of this month, and why we come in August to do, to, to bring a budget report to the council to vote on it when her, when her budget's $10,000, uh, for sure. So I voted yes for that budget. I can't be a part of that. Um, I have to withstand my vote to know, uh, I don't, I don't want to co-sign for that. Um, um, I believe that, and I appreciate the mayor, you did a good job on getting this money for us and wanting to know we appreciate your hard work, and I hope the council will consider, uh, some type of way, uh, that we can un, un, come, assist her in her economic recovery. That's something I want to make sure that's brought up in the meeting, that if they would address her situation, that we approve her $40,000 short for the remainder of this year. I think to me, I'm, she, we've been in the fudge as many times and balanced it, and all of a sudden we bring a budget report to the council. So mayor, all I want to do is withstand my vote to know, and I just want that to be on record.
Alright. Next on the agenda, the Murphy Arts District, a bit of an update by Ms. Pamela Griffin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for having me. I have some information for you. So I pulled some information together for you on the flashpad attendance for this season. So that's the first page that you have in front of you. Um, a little bit to my surprise, our numbers, of course, we don't have 2022 compared to, we only have 2019 to compare it to. And so we are approximately 11,000, um, flashpad goers left for 2021 compared to 2019. And so I started looking at that and kind of like, well, that was a little surprising. Let me dig into this a little bit more. And so one of the big things that affects that is in 2019, we opened on May the 17th in 2020, that's 2019. In 2021, we did not open until June 2nd. So you can see there that we had 6,000 people come through in the month of May for 2019. So that's more than half of the difference just right there. Um, the other thing that I will tell you is that our counts are only as good as our counters count, so I think we have a little bit of work to do there. Uh, but, uh, that, as well as I think COVID probably does have an impact on us as well, um, with people more reluctant to get out even though it is an outdoor activity. Um, so I made some more graphs and stuff for you, and so you can see like with the lawn graph that we're still trending about the same way, we just didn't have as high highs as we did in 2019. Now, I also think probably we have not been doing as much marketing in general just for the flashpad and paid marketing, um, just to the expense savings during COVID. And so I think going into the 2022 season, that's definitely something that we should look at in promoting not only the flashpad but Eldorado in general in conjunction with that. So that's something that I noticed. Um, so, uh, one thing that we did this year that we have gotten great feedback on is we replaced the wood mulch with rubber mulch. And that's been, um, the, the, people coming to the flashpad have given us a lot of great feedback. They love it a lot more than the wood mulch. And so we're really pleased with that. Um, and then I will tell you too, one thing that we have come up just in the last week or two is we have a leak that our maintenance guys have been trying to, um, determine exactly where the leak is coming from, and we believe it's under the concrete somewhere. And so the maintenance guys have been turning valves on and turning valves off and trying to oscillate, uh, the different pipes and to see if they can tell where it is. And so we're not quite sure what that means, uh, just yet from an expense and repair standpoint. We have this coming weekend and one more weekend that we will be running the flashpad and then we'll be winterizing it. So September the 19th is our last day to have a flashpad open. The play escape and the rest of the playground equipment will of course be open every day for children to play, but the flashpad itself and the water will be winterizing that work in time to get ready for the ice rink. Uh, so this leak is not affecting our ability to run the flashpad right now, but it is something that we'll need to get fixed before we open for the 2022 season. Um, so that's the flashpad, that's my update, um, there. I also have given you a couple of sheets, because I thought this was just some fun information from an economic development standpoint, because I think that, you know, we are, um, one of the Murphy Arts District's main purposes is to be economic development for this community and the county as a whole, and, um, to bring people in from out of town and out of state. And so for the Avet Brothers concert, we sold 3,176 tickets to that show. The first sheet that you have, um, in front of you is a list of states that we sold tickets to. And so, and I will tell you, this is based on the number of ticket transactions, not the actual, actual number of tickets sold. So for example, we have one ticket purchase from Alaska, that, that person could have bought two or four, how many are tickets, but it's just one transaction. And unfortunately, that's the way we're getting information.
Make these numbers work, okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And so we have 989 transactions for 3176 tickets, so that was an average of 3.2 tickets per transaction. And we've got a little bit of work to do with our ticketing software in order to be able to get actual ticket numbers, um, out of that system and the glitch and the reporting that they're working on. But you can see that, like I said, we have 42, um, states that we sell tickets to. And so to me, that is, that's, that's pretty incredible that, um, we have that big of a reach and it's probably more sticking to the reach of the Avet Brothers than it does for us specifically, being in Eldorado. But what that does mean is we have a lot of people that were here from out of town and out of state that were in Eldorado for the first time. They were staying in hotels, they were eating out in restaurants, they were buying gas, they were buying whatever else they were spending money on and getting to experience our community, getting to go home and tell their people about, um, how their experience was and that they had a good time and that they want to come back to a show in the future. And so I think that from a grassroots marketing, economic development standpoint, I think that it was a huge win. You can see what's even more important to me, I think from, than the out of state visitors, is the, um, out of town visitors that were within Arkansas. So the next page that you have is the number of ticket transactions we have for cities within Arkansas. So we've reached 82 different cities, uh, with these ticket sales. And so you can see we have 79 from Little Rock buying tickets, 79 different people buying, purchasing tickets. Um, and so at the 3.2, that would be more in the 300 person range, 250 to 300 people that bought tickets from Little Rock that are coming down to Eldorado for the show. So, um, so there's two, uh, thank you for the progress on, uh, 300 people from out of town and out of state. So I thought that was fun. Um, one statistic that is not as great about the Ada is our ticket attendance was low for that show. And I think that the resurgence in COVID and the Delta variant is definitely making an impact on, um, our ti, our attendance for people that have bought tickets, and then also people buying tickets as well. So we have seen a slowdown of the, uh, ticket sales in the last six to eight weeks, and that's really the main thing that we have to, um, to, uh, contribute to. So we're still battling that, um, highly recommend vaccinations, and that will help us get back to business better and sooner. So I hope that works out. Um, I, okay, so I say that, um, the next thing I wanted to mention is I know everyone is super excited about Wheel Kick as we are. Um, they are in the last stages of their preparation for opening, and they will be open to the public on September the 23rd. We're going to be doing some soft opening events leading up to that starting next week, and I believe you all should have gotten an email for September the 22nd to invite the city council, and our board will be invited that night as well, as some of our local nonprofit board members. And so I hope that you all will have time that evening to come, um, experience Wheel Kick and give us your feedback and let us know what you think. Um, and then I'll just mention that we've got seven more shows coming up through the end of this year. We have, um, Raisa, who's an illusionist out of Branson on September 11th. We have Whiskey Myers on Friday, September 17th. Brett Foster, first night of Music Fest on Septem, uh, October 1st. Ice Cube with special guest Warren G. at the second night of Music Fest on October 2nd. We have Blackberry Smoke on October the 23rd, Ron White on November 11th, and Zach Williams on December the 10th for his Christmas tour. Any questions?
I have a call question for you.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job reaching, so.
A little bit, Madam.
Just, just from a marketing perspective, you say, I see that you've got a few from Fayetteville, so is it their name recognition that we reached to Fayetteville, or did you go promote to Fayetteville, or did you, I'm just thinking about how we market the whole, total state, go marketing.
I think for the Avet Brothers, they have a very strong fan base that follows them around.
Right.
And I know that there were, I couldn't tell you how many, but I do know that there were instances of people, because the Avet Brothers played at the Walmart amp in Rogers on Friday night while they were here on Saturday. A lot of their fans will make a weekend of it and have tickets to both shows. And so there's people that went to the show in, in Rogers on Friday night and drove down here on Saturday and went to the show here on Saturday night.
Well, good job for you guys on picking the right artist. I mean, you guys picked the right one, so good job. Are you guys marketing? What about that question then? Are you marketing in Fayetteville, radio?
Well, not marketing on radio, actually. The biggest way that we reach people, um, out of our radio and TV, uh, areas is side digital marketing and, uh, social media. So we do some targeted digital marketing for people that we know that they're fans of that genre of music, and so we do, uh, digital targeted marketing that way.
Good job.
Any more?
Alright.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Mr. Marvin Stewart.
Uh, I'm Marvin Stewart, I work for sanitation department. I don't know if y'all familiar with, uh, everybody's familiar with COVID, but, uh, we, a couple of coworkers here. COVID is real serious right now. PPE at the city sucks big now. Once you have to buy your own gloves, that's what that is. You're supposed to be taking this serious. We can't even have gloves every day to work. You have to bring your own gloves. Not only that, it's the, uh, you go beyond call of duty dealing with the city. Y'all already don't have your PPP, PPE. Then we dealing with the trucks break down. When the trucks break down, we become the truck. Meaning, we have to do everything manual by hand. And at the city, it's not, it's not working right down there. What I mean by it's not working right, you have a handful of hard workers, you use the same people every day to go do this job. I'm 50 something years old, you got guys down there 20 some, 30 some years old. I don't mind doing my job, but going beyond the call of duty, that's another thing, when you don't deal with your route with your legs and with your hands and running up the street, going through timber lines, going through God knows what else, beyond the call of duty, and you can't get rewarded for it, what about the other guy? But when you go to your boss, you say, what about him? What about him? Are you the right man for the job? He had to learn the job just like me. I hate to complain, but when you feel like you're being used, it's time to speak up and speak out. We don't have the proper equipment down there, trucks steady breaking down, and then we have some, what about another truck? What about gloves? It's not in the budget. That's the only thing I've been hearing down there, is the budget. We get coworkers five years, another coworker been down there years, hard workers. We can't even get a quarter raise. We exposed every day to bacteria. Supposed to be essential work, we don't get essential pay. We don't get essential pay. We get looked over. We have to dump trash by hand when the truck break down, we dealing with needles, we gotta be careful. We dealing with dirty DOC things each and every day. Well, we can't even get a quarter raise when we go to supervise. That's not right. That's not right at all. But you can use us every day. It's the same handful of people that get used every single day. But you got this guy riding around in a truck all day, 15 years younger than me. He fresh when he go home, I'm half dead when I go home. But I do my job. I don't, I don't tell him no. But it just have to be, it's a lot of things going on that you guys have no clue, no clue at all. We can't even get a raise. Guy been there five years, can't get a quarter. I know a guy been there 10 years, haven't got a dime. I've been there two and a half years. I think I'm worth more than what I am, and I just ask for some justice, some anything. It's a shame when you got kids, get out of high school, make more than you. My kid just found out what I made. Daddy, that's all you made? That's all I made. I just make it look good. I just make it look good. So it's, you know, I'm just saying, man, we, we're not being treated right. The city don't even have gloves every day for us to grab this nasty trash, spaghetti bag, boo boo diapers. If you don't bring your gloves, you gotta pick that up with your hands. They just want the job done, but we get the job done. We just be prepared to get the job done. But you can't get a dime raise. Two and a half years, I've been asking for 50 cents, it's not in the budget. Well, who hold the budget? Who hold the budget? I roll out of bed in the, where I go to work, because I'm a provider. I'm not asking for no sympathy, I'm just asking for rice. That's it. I don't like to complain, but y'all don't know what goes on at the city. If I tell you we can't even get PP, PPE, you know, we can't get no money. What we steady add each and every day. We in that sign every day. Thinking you finna go home? Hold up, I need a favor. When you will do me a favor? When can I get a quarter, a nickel, a dime? Each and every time they tell somebody this, it's not in the budget. It's not in the budget. I've been here and there for two and a half years, it's not in the budget. So I thought I had to come to city council meeting and share it, for somebody, I hope somebody hear it, I would appreciate it. That's just about it. We have to bring our own gloves to work.
I'll do it with that first thing in the morning.
I appreciate it.
You're talking about like just rubber gloves?
We have, we have certain gloves on the truck.
Right.
Blue and gray, that's what.
There's a barrier, block of gloves?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, we can't even, we can't even get those. You gotta go to the store, go to Wal, I go to Walmart, Dollar General, and bring my own gloves, because you don't know what to expect when you go to work. But one thing about it, they go get their work out of it. Don't mind doing it. We don't mind doing it, but give us something to work with, you know? It's COVID out here. They tell us to mask up, but can you give us some gloves? Or do you care? That's, that's what you gotta answer, do they care? Ever did and they don't? Because it's not coming out of their pocket. You can't care about me, you can't appreciate me, if you can't give me something to work with. Once again, do you care? That's the bottom line. Do you care? We work hard, man, when a truck break, a truck break down at the city every week, every week, and when that truck break down, nine times out of 10, I'm not on that truck anymore. That gentleman right back there, he do the work of two men. I can watch him work. I tell him every day, you're a young man, you should help me out, but he does though. He does. He's a hard worker, you know? But he gets the same people every day. And they tell me. And they tell me, what I'm telling what he told me, you in better shape than him. I'm in better shape than him. Well, you need to, he need to get in shape like I did. He need to get in shape like me. Maybe, maybe you need to stop babying this guy. That you been babying for so long, for so many years, and throw him up there. I'm older than him. I'm ten years older than him. It's not right. It's a lot going on that you guys don't know about. And I just wanna bring it to the light. I know I'm gonna have a red dot on my back now. I know this. I know how it works. I'm gonna have a red dot, but after a while, you gotta say enough is enough. You gotta stand up. And that's what I'm trying to do. And I think I'm speaking for a whole, the whole sanitation department. But I'm glad I just got bound over to Rexon Park. They treat you a little bit more better. They treat you a little bit more better and I'm enjoying it. I've been there two days, so. Uh, y'all need to just take a look at, that's all, that's all I ask.
Mr. Stewart, um, I know you said you went to your supervisor with this. Did you go to the public works director? Is he aware of it?
I, I don't even know who that is.
Robert Edmonds? You don't know who?
I, I know who that is.
Okay. He's over sanitation streets and that. Did, did you ever go to him and talk to him about it? I, personally, I feel like had you gone to him, it would have been taken care of. And of course, we'll, we'll get with Mr. Edmonds tomorrow and.
I think, I think I got an idea. They said that's who my boss now, which I'm happy. I'm gonna be had it turn.
Mr. Edmonds is the public works director and now he falls under the council.
Sir, I'd like to speak to one thing. You're talking about the garbage trucks breaking down and I've had several conversations with Mr. Edmonds about that. And we're actually waiting for a truck to show up. I mean, you know, you look at the car lots, you got a pretty good idea of what's going on in, in the automobile industry today. It's even worse when you get into the heavy equipment side. Everything that can move, that can work, is being gobbled up. And, you know, we, we're trying, we're trying very hard to keep good equipment on the streets. But we're looking, we're looking at taking a totally different approach to where we're not running trucks four and five years and spending more money trying to keep them running. So we, 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 we understand that and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to stand up here and tell us about the problems. Uh, rest assured, I think there, all of us on the council have had that conversation with Robert at one time or another about the equipment. And, and bottom line is, is there's efforts being made. Uh, and I think, I think Mr. Williamson made an appropriate comment that there'll be a phone call first thing in the morning and.
Next will be tonight.
Be tonight, okay. So, you know.
I don't know if you're aware, the turnover rate in the last two months? Fast as they coming in, they going out.
Well, we're, we're in an unusual time, sir. But I appreciate the courage you're showing by stepping forth and saying what you said. And I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Hold on a second before you go, brother. I'm, I'm just gonna say this before you go, man. I just want, first of all, I'd like to say, brother, thank you for letting us know. We don't, we don't, we're not privy to what's going on inside the activities of how everything works and flows every day. And so thank you for letting us know that. As far as, uh, rates, you know, that's something that we probably hasn't, that we need to discuss. I don't know the, all the true numbers yet to see where we at totally, but that's something. I know Eldorado is behind on what they pay their workers. We know that. As far as when you compare it to other cities with the same size, with the same, uh, makeup, we are behind. So we know that. So we, we know you guys out there, like Reverend Farner said one day, he said, let the trash truck people not come for a month. Let's see how this city looks.
We thought, we, it's about ten of us, we thought about that. But then you actually know how much trash truly they.
Right.
Who out there, we headed.
I know what y'all do. It's, it's, it's amazing for the city. I know I take my trash to my, to, to my corner and, and proudly, thankful that you guys come around the corner to get it away from my address. Because I don't wanna deal with that smell and I know you guys have to deal with that stuff and I'm gonna, this, I'm just gonna go on and say this. I didn't really wanna say, but I'm gonna say this before I cuss. This is why I disagree with us taking the streets and the sanitation department and, and out of, out of the, uh, public works department, out of the mayor's hands. Because we not, we're not involved in giving no direction every day. We're not leading the department. We're not making decisions every day. We have one little meeting that we have calls to Robert here and there. Where is the guidance at from us? If we're gonna take the seats from, take the, take the power from the mayor, take the streets out of her hands, then where is our leadership in, in giving guidance every day to these streets of Eldorado? No one's giving direction, but we quick to take power from somebody, but we not, no one's up here making no initiative to lead Robert and tell Robert when he has to get done daily by day on a daily basis, if we're his, if we're his supervisor. We shouldn't be your, we shouldn't be his supervisor. City council, we should have to wait until you come up right before us. We're not involved in what's going on in the city at all, until the things affect us personally. So I thank you for giving us that inside information. Because we're not privy to what's going on on a daily basis of what you guys are up against. And we need to, that should be the mayor's job to take that initiative. But we over here got the, the streets in our hands of the city council. Man, we, we are, we just, we just all backwards in Eldorado. We just, and that's why everybody leaving. That's why the new census came out and we, now we down to seventeen thousand seven hundred people. Those are customers. I look at every person that live in Eldorado as a customer. That's the reason that everybody leaving. We're leaving because we don't, because we're not taking care of the people who live in Eldorado, Arkansas. We doing our own little interest. We taking care of our own little selfish personal interest, but we're not taking care of people like you who's actually making the, the city run. I'm just, I'm just disappointed in the way we doing things up here and we're not getting nothing done. Everybody's leaving the town. We don't even care, 'cause we got our little friendship and little buddy buddy system. We getting checks here and getting things done here. We doing things for our friends. But the city of Eldorado is drawing up because we are not making decisions and leading this town the way it should be led. And it's disappointing to me, what we're doing up here. And everybody is leaving and we don't even care. And I'm sorry about what you're going through, young man. I appreciate you coming up here and letting us know what you're up.
It's embarrassing statistically. I just can't. Magnificent. Hope.
Yes, they've been paid more than you guys.
Eldorado, this movement time. This movement time. That's embarrassing. I found that out last month.
I've been knowing for a few years now that they get more than you guys.
It was part of a study that we were trying to get done that didn't pass getting done. And I just, I wanna go on the record as saying, as, as was mentioned, uh, shame on anybody up here that doesn't know the situation. Because we are elected to serve. That is our job. That's our job to know what's going on.
If a truck break down, I would like for each and one of y'all to see what we did. If the truck break down, he get on one side, you get on one side. The truck run, you running with the truck. From here to, what, about McDonald's? Fifty-two years old. I'm running with the truck. I am actually running it. His joy and grabbing his trash, looking it up, dumping it. And if I bring it down too slow, he gonna leave me. 'Cause we trying to beat the heat. You're not gonna beat the heat no way.
Shame on us.
When the truck break down, we are the truck. You guys have no idea of the hard work that we put in at the city, especially when a truck break down. Sometimes two or three trucks. You don't have like five on the yard.
Again, shame on us. Because I get the calls. I still get the calls. So, yeah.
And all I'm saying to you is, good job. For two and a half years, I really think you, 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 you picking with it now. But that's the mindset you have. Because when you ask for a raise, we get the same thing, no different answer. It's not in the budget. Well, can I get fifty cents anything? It's not in the budget. He tell, fifty people there. However, people work at, at the city, it's never different. It's not in the budget.
We raised seventeen point five million on, on the general, then we raised another five point eight million in the, once in sales tax and a quarter in sales tax. It's just, it's just allocation. It's people, you know, you don't wanna find out what person's heart is? Follow what his money is.
Where you send the money?
Public Works was just allocated in that budget that we passed three percent, so you should be seeing that.
Yeah, we, we got, we just got that on us.
You have seen that?
It just passed.
And I, and I understand that, uh, Mr. Stewart, I understand that completely. But when you know, you, just a hard worker, when you know what your worth is, when you know what your worth is, that hurts. When you know you go to work and work hard every day, when you have to change shirts two times because you don't put in work. But he, he don't never have to change his shirt because you don't put in no work. But how is you making more than me? Didn't I start before you?
And that's the difference. That's the difference between across-the-board raise and an evaluation raise that we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what you wanna see evaluated.
Well, that's what, that's what was talked about.
Everybody getting evaluated by the.
No.
Our group is coming out.
Something I've learned.
Right, something that we done talked about.
That was part of the Johansenburg, uh, Johansen, uh, study that didn't pass.
Think closely what Mr. Stewart is saying. He's talking about double standards between employees.
I can be there.
What you know is who you know.
I can be there five years with all the experience in the world. He can come through the door. No experience. Making more than me or making what I make.
And if we just wanna be honest about the whole situation and tell the truth and call a spade a spade, it's everywhere. It's across the board. It's not just in sanitation. And anybody who's looked at the numbers knows that. And that's why I'm saying shame on people who act like they don't know that it exists. It's going on, it's been going on. It didn't just start. So if we're gonna be in, if we're gonna be the leaders, if we're gonna be the ones that control what's going on, it should be fair. And that's what it has not been. That's what I have said since the time I got here. And if you remember, I've said it and I'll say it again, my father worked at the Eldorado Water Utilities. He worked on the sewer department. My daddy worked hard. My daddy retired from the Eldorado Water Utilities. I have a heart for the workers of this city. I say it all the time. I mention it all the time. This city does not run without y'all. And it's not just the trash, it's the streets, it's the water companies, all of that. And if you look at how people are getting paid and what people look like and how they're getting paid, there is a huge discrepancy in that. And so we can sit up here and act like we don't know what's going on and we're gonna make a phone call. We know what's going on. And we've always known what's going on. And if we act like we don't know what's going on, we are liars. Because we do know. And if we don't know, shame on us for lying. Because all of us sitting up here in these seats, we were elected by people just like you. We all heard the story. We all know what's going on. So if we don't do something about it, shame on us. And control the budget. We control the budget. So you have been heard. I, I appreciate you coming tonight and sharing that. I did not know how much you were wanting to share. And I'm also gonna say this, because Andre mentioned about the, the one meeting a month with the public works, the Eldorado Water Utilities Public Works. It's at ten AM on a Wednesday. Who can show up for that?
Yeah, I just gotta give the trash. He thinks so.
Well, I just, once again, I just wanna thank you again. It ain't like we ain't had this discussion before. We seem to put more mon- money in, bring in more than, than we do personnel. We not had this discussion before. Uh, we seem to prioritize paying certain people more than, we, we pay a dog catcher seventy thousand dollars. I just can't get over that. And here we got a man that deal with trash, even pick up some of the stuff that the dog catcher supposed to be moving, dead animals out the street. They do that every day. I, they don't come by my house every day and pick up dead animals out the street. And that, and this is something that we need to look at. We need to address. We losing good employees for employees that riding around in the truck every day under air conditioning. And I saw that, some of us here that saw that. But we see them guys that work on them trucks in the rain, cold, sleep, every day. And, and, and I just think we need to re-prioritize some things. And I'm hoping by him, Mr. Stewart coming up here, bold enough to address this, 'cause he writing, he gonna have a target on his back tomorrow, wants to get read about it in the paper. But he courageous enough to stand out for others who probably would be here if they wasn't afraid of losing their job, of being targeted. So thank you again. Um, just thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next on our agenda is announcements. I do wanna make, um, this one announcement. We are, I wanna make a couple of announcements. Tomorrow, uh, for those of you, I'm wearing burgundy tonight. It's the sickle cell disease awareness color. My sister, Vamitra Smith Foster, passed away in two thousand seventeen from sickle cell disease. And so on tomorrow, for those of you who knew that she worked at Simmons Bank, um, she worked in the window. She did amazing customer service, if I do say so myself. There is a balloon release in her memory. Uh, her birthday will be on Monday. She would have been fifty years old. So for those of you who can and will, come by for the balloon release tomorrow at noon at Simmons Bank, their main branch. I also wanna mention on Saturday, we have the outdoor expo. And we know that this year will actually be on September the eleventh. There'll be a, a service, a memorial service that morning. I believe it starts at nine thirty. Um, we are one of the few places that has a memorial piece of the World Tower Center here in our city. And so for those of you who's not gone by, it sits there at the conference center. Uh, just go by and see. I, I went by yesterday. It is still amazing to me after twenty years, the emotions that it reflects. Uh, Chief Mosby, do you wanna make a pitch for the stair climb? That will be on September the eleventh at the county, at the Union County Courthouse?
So as the mayor said, not only is outdoor expo falling on nine eleven, but falling on twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. And so, um, you know, we, we've been talking about that we're actually hiring people now that were born after nine eleven. And so, uh, the people coming into the workforce graduated high school, were born after nine eleven. And one of the things we did as a country is we promised not to forgive what happened that day. And so there's a lot of things going on. We're gonna have a memorial service. And as the mayor said, we have a, a piece of the World Trade Center Steel at South Hart. That is the official Arkansas nine eleven memorial here in Eldorado. So there are several around the state, but the official Arkansas nine eleven memorial was the very first one was here in Eldorado. And, uh, and former mayor Dimas and, uh, our former chaplain at fire department, Senator Claypool, spearheaded that, uh, that project and, and guided me. Um, there will be a memorial service. There's also gonna be, uh, a lot of good food and things at the, at the expo. But we're gonna do a stair climb in, in memory of nine eleven. It's through the National Fire Fighters Foundation. If you wanna participate, uh, you can, you can come and, and, uh, there's a, a small donation. You can, uh, you'll get a picture of, of a fallen firefighter. You can walk the stairs of the courthouse. You can do one step or you do all nineteen hundred and eighty steps. And so that's the equivalent of a hundred and ten flights of stairs, which is what the World Trade Center is for. And so, um, I've, the mayor's been, been working out, trying to get her steps in. We've got several folks in fire department, um, the local health club that's been calling and asking about it, so they're gonna put people in. We've got a lot of sponsors and, uh, and so we hope we have a good turnout. At a steady pace, you can do the, the entire hundred and ten flights in about forty-five minutes.
Up and down thirty-nine times.
Up and down thirty-nine times at the courthouse. If you, uh, you don't have anything to do Saturday, uh, come walk the stairs or come encourage people that are walking stairs.
I need some encouragement.
You got an oxygen unit, I'm sorry. In fact, uh. I know I could see training, so I'm just gonna know if we do participate, you know.
So basically, is there an ambulance out there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure there's adequate medicine.
Gotta be, gotta be. Any other announcements?
I'll make my schedule.